Good evening. It is six o'clock, Tuesday, March the 12th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting of Montgomery City Council into session. Thank you for your attendance and those viewing from the outside. We appreciate your interest in our city. I'd like to ask everyone to sign off their cell phones and any other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions to our meeting as we proceed. A little bit something different this evening. We have a proclamation, so I'm waiting if you make me hear it. What's over there?
My name is Kirsten Wilson. Heather Montgomery, Assistant Senior, but also the State Testing Officer. This just means that I'm in charge of a lot of theater kids in Texas.
All right, very good. Whereas every year in March, the American Alliance for Theater Education, the Educational Theater Association, and International Testing Society partner on toward theater in our schools month to raise awareness about the value of theater education and draw attentions to the need for all students to have access to a quality theater program. And whereas theater education enriches the lives of countless students in our schools and allows them to discover skills in leadership, self-confidence, communication, and collaboration. And whereas theater education has been linked to higher levels of academic achievement across curriculum, this pathway for students going into art careers helps provide them with motivation to stay in school and develop self-discipline. And whereas theater is a critical component of the learning process and development of creativity, problem-solving, critical thinking abilities. And whereas theater in our schools month is an opportunity for a community to engage in the process of theater education and frame awareness of the importance of arts education. Now, I am a center. Mayor and City of Montgomery, Texas, new year welcome by March 2024. That's theater in our schools month.
You would be in the picture.
Thank you.
Watch this side because it falls off. Awful.
And one more where is. March the 2nd was Texas Independence Day, and we had 2024 Texas Flag Celebration winners that we wanted to make more public, perhaps than it was. In third place for residential, Megan and Levi Tuttle at 203 Brock's Lane. Second place was just John Fox. Cheryl was not included in that award.
Did I cash the check today?
Okay, so maybe she was. 821 Stewart Street with 65 flags. I guess she's growing those things. And in first place, Rebecca and Gary Huss at 602 Worsham Street with outstanding Texas flag decorations. And the commercial winner, third place was Fire Station 51. Second place was Slice of Amish. And first place was A&amp;A Plant and Produce. Did thank you to everyone who participated and staff for getting that together. All right, so I'd like to ask you to join me for the invocation and the pledge to American and Texas flags. Heather and Paula, thank you so much for education, for being Lord of Lords and King of Kings as you are, for the talents that you give to these young ladies and others who participate in our educational programs, for those who guide them in leadership and skill sets that will bode well to be good and productive citizens. We thank you for our kids. We thank you for those who work with our kids. We ask your blessings on our schools, our institutions, our churches, our businesses. And Lord, just guide and direct us in safety and in good health. And bless us in wisdom going forward on behalf of citizens of this city. And we ask your blessings on our meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
For the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, under the visitor's citizens forum, I have one who signed up to speak. Philip LaFaye, if you'll go to the podium, please, and state your address, please.
Now, I just wanted to throw in my two cents worth on the school district's doing and the water lines that have been discussed. Personally, even though a school district with a tech center doesn't necessarily pay our tax, it will drive hundreds and hundreds of people to the city who do get it. And I think it'll be good for the city. I hope that they are potentially going to delay their project this year. And one of the reasons cited is that there's been a delay within the city on an agreement on water lines and other improvements. I just wanted to clarify, that was originally part of our PD, and that PD has expired. But 15 years ago, before current engineers and so on, we have done a lot of planning. Always with the city, we've never done anything the city council hasn't approved of. We've never done anything that the city attorneys haven't approved of. You know, so bridges, helms, whatever, everything we've done has always been in sync with the city. And at that time, I think Blile was the engineer. There was discussion about looping water lines around the city. And subsequently, a major loop was done, went up 149 down 1097, and then up those springs. And actually, part of that was paid for us for the 380 agreement, which we yet to proceed any money on, but that completed the loop. There was also discussion that we didn't really want to put water lines under the grid. And this was with while we're the city engineers. And so we recorded two easements, one at the end of Anna Springs Lane and the other at the end of Harley. And both of those easements actually go down to the loop, and they could potentially even join. And it was always the intention to take one of those and then go east along the loop rather than try to cross the grid. So it's not my decision, and it's, you know, it's city stuff. But I do want to say that if that's a reason for delaying the school district, it's a pity because I think the school district, tech center will bring a lot to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. We have items one through eight. If the council wants to consider any of those items, just let me know what you want to pull out and consider individually.
On item number eight, the approval is the following. A, city council workshop minutes, and B, city council meeting minutes from 227 to 224.
Okay.
On B, the city council meeting minutes. I noticed that there's a spot for Diana and then you, Nikki, to sign. Did y'all, when did y'all sign that?
We sign that after we approve them.
After we approve, okay.
Nothing gets suggested or signed until the council has approved them.
Well, I'd seen in the past where city administrators sign whatever's on the agenda. Just saying, yes, this is what I approved up presenting. So I didn't know if it should have been signed before or after it's out. And then secondly, on item number two there, when we were talking about the election and how we won't be having an election via the city. And I made a statement that we were saving the taxpayers $25,000, and that didn't make it into the notes.
Because, you know, with the timeframe that I have to turn these around with all the what I've got to be cap, some things are not material facts. So if you want me to add that, I'm allowed that.
I just think it's great for the taxpayers to be able to hear that. Please.
Yep, that would be great.
With that, I'd like to make the motion that we accept items one through eight on the consent agenda with those changes.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have Cheryl with a second? All right, motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving consent agenda, items one through eight, say yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. We will approve items one through eight with the exceptions noted, additions noted. All right. Here we go. Item nine, discussion of possible action to approve. Mary Ann is still waiting? So we have someone we're waiting for on nine. So y'all let me know when she's available. All right, so going on to item 10, consideration, possible action on an agreement between the city of Montgomery, Texas and Kendig Keast Collaborative Incorporated, KKC, to provide professional planning services to the city. Specifically, KKC will oversee in the master planning of key areas within the city, development of future land use, thoroughfare, and open space plans, and oversee the recodification of sections of the city municipal ordinances, ordinance, and zone ordinance resulting in an up-to-date streamlined unified development ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council. You have the both the draft agreement in front of you, a long hearings memo there. And again, just as a reminder of the steps in this process, it was workshop with the council on scope of work and what I must include and not include on February the 26th. And the consensus was to be equal with the entire scope of work as proposed, which reflected in the agreement in front of you. With that, we have to answer any questions. Mr. Keast was out of town and could not speak here. But I'll do my best to answer any questions today.
We reviewed this extensively in prior workshop, maybe even two workshops. And I think it's a huge step in the right direction, solves a lot of issues potentially. It does cost, but I think the benefit from the cost will be great for the city.
Well, I have to take exception to the process we used to get to this point. You know, we, as a council, we're responsible for the taxpayers' money. We're looking at $350,000. We don't ever pass anything in this council that I know of without some type of competitive bidding. We don't allow the public works department, the city police department, and we don't allow the engineers to just go and say, I need $350,000 for this project. And we say, okay. No, we require them to get a minimum of two, and mostly, we should get at least three competitive bids. I saw no competitive bids on this situation. The city administration told us what they believed to be true. That is not right to the other departments. That's not fair to the city. We don't know if we got the best deal or not. We were just told this is the best deal. That is not the way I want to run this city, not the way I want to spend these taxpayers' money. Now, my council can disagree. That's fine. I respect their opinions, but this is my opinion. And also, we, we've got a lot of things going on in the fire. To me, this is not a priority with the city. You know, and here's, here's a little history lesson. Here is a plan. This plan is a downtown design master plan. It's 2021. Have we done anything with it? No, not a thing. We contracted with somebody to get our signs rearranged and be uniform throughout the city. Do we have any new signs? No, we don't have any new signs because we make plans and the plans aren't put into action. I don't want to see $350,000 go down the drain in the next two years. We're talking about paying these people.
Stan, can I interject for a minute, just, just, just for a second? So before you keep stating misstated facts, okay? The signs, the signs is, is, is an EDC project, and it's, they're coming, right? That's done. It's already done, and it's going to be put into place. The project that you're looking at right there, that was done by Texas A&amp;M students, not engineers, students.
Who did the project of the golf course thing? Who did that project?
It was a Texas A&amp;M student project, Stan. Okay, there's no engineering involved in that.
I know, but it, oh, forget about the plans. But as far as I'm concerned, we had plans, and I haven't seen them come into fruition.
So I do have one other thing to ask. On his point about the $350,000, does that fall into the same standard of we don't necessarily get to bid it, we have to go with the one that's the most qualified?
That is, that's correct. These are professional services. So unlike a construction contract where you have detailed construction plans that are put out and you get, you know, dollar bids on, these are professional services. So you did go through a process of soliciting responses to your request for qualifications. And in that process, you select what is, what you consider to be the most qualified person. Then you attempt to negotiate a contract with that contractor firm. And you can choose not to, if you don't reach a meeting of the minds, you can choose not to go forward, and then, you know, go to the next.
Right, so what I want to, the biggest thing I want to pull out of that is that if we try to make that decision based on money, it's against Texas state law. We cannot do that. We have to go, when we do those projects with services like that, we have to pick the one that is best qualified based on everything that was presented.
No, no other great people were presented.
We voted to allow, we voted to allow Gary to choose.
Here is, here is something we committed to. Water plant number two and three, bleach conversions. I'd rather spend the money on doing this to help keep our public people safer. That's, that's my point. We've got other things in the fire besides planning. This thing all started because we want our ordinances changed. We didn't want our whole plan for the city that I know of, it, it's blown into that. That's what I'm saying. And here tonight, we've got three or four ordinances up for, and we didn't contact anybody or any professional service to get these ordinances changed. So what, and then, how, after two years of spending this amount of money, how are we going to value what we spent? How, what is our rule for valuing how much money that we got out of it? So that's my point.
So here's the reason why we do master designs, right? Instead of letting a developer just come in and say, I'm going to build what I want, just as long as I follow the ordinance, I can make, I can put anything I want in here as long as I follow the ordinance. If we master design it, they have to build what we designed.
How many developers do we have come in here that are upset? Because they're told something, and they read something different, they're told different things. It's like every single one of them. So this will level set and give you everything that you need to know. You want to come here? Here's where our city's laid out. You put your round peg and our round pole here. Instead of doing it how it's happening now, which it gives streamlining, and everybody now knows, and it's not in the spirit of, or I like this person, and I don't like that person, however. It's being, so it's, it's given a structure. And I do believe over time, this does give a big ROI.
Right.
So as a business person, the last thing I want to have to do is jump through a whole bunch of government hoops to do something, right? Every time a developer or builder has to come in front of the council to get a variance or whatever, it is a pain in the neck. It delays projects. It, that costs money. Time is money. So the rules are clear. They're very standardized. And all you have to do is, here it is, build what we told you to build. That's what fits in that spot. They walk away. It's much, much better way of doing business.
I agree.
For years, Montgomery's had this stigma of hard to do business with. We've made a commitment two years ago, we were going to change that. This is part of that process.
And even more specific, Stan, when we sat down in the summer and we looked at those goals, and we put those sheets up on the wall, and we went through there and found what's consistent, this scratches the itch of like five of the top seven needs, okay? And, and the biggest of which is that master plan. What you saw there, that was here before I even got here three years ago, already in place, was specific to downtown. We need a master plan. So we're running out of space, and that was the big driving force that we all talked about, of being inundated with different variances and situations to where people thought one thing when something else turned out to be true. And this gives guidance to the staff to be more specific and direct and upfront in a way that gives them simplistic language from people, and here's the key point, from people who are highly qualified. And that's the big point I want to make. That's the difference between what, you bring up some valid points, okay, but that's a real confined area. This is a comprehensive approach. And the way I'm seeing it is, is that if I remember correctly, we had like 120 or 30,000 in consultation fees. If you took that, how much?
150,000.
150,000. And if you took that in three years, because it says two to three years. And that's within our expected allotment for budget, basically for consultation. So we're within the ballpark, is what I'm saying. It's not, not unbudgeted bunny.
And with us being on the map, with so many people, an influx coming in, it is a priority. If we don't get, if we don't get the table set, we don't want somebody to set our table for us.
I know, I understand that, but I, you know, it just, I just, it's, the process is killing me because, you know, we got a planning and zoning commission right now. To me, if I was on the planning and zoning commission, my feelings would be a little bit hurt because we're bringing somebody from the outside of this city to tell us what to do. I think we got enough qualified people to get what we need to done right here. If we'll just get together and talk about it and discuss it. How do they know, you know, we, okay, go ahead.
Stan, the, the purpose of the planning and zoning commission is to make sure projects that are brought to them follow the ordinances. That's their purpose. And our ordinance are a mess. That's why we need to redo them, right? So if I have a book of rules, and the rules are all over the place, and I'm on that committee, I don't know what to do. So the ordinances, give them guidance. It will make their job much easier.
Absolutely.
It will give them, hey, this is what the city wants to do, right? Those are appointed positions, and we've appointed them and said, here's a book of rules, follow.
Yep. Yeah, I think the planning and zoning, to your specific point, will be thrilled when they begin to see things simplified for themselves. Because they, like myself, being on the council for three years, I feel like we're having to do too much that's outside of, you know, so we want that expert. But we don't want it coming from this place, and this place, and this place with a book this thick in ordinances that nobody can understand. And so we're counting on legal and engineers to make it to where people can understand, regular folks that will sit down at whatever meetings they're in, including EDC, and have, because I've been on EDC for three years, almost three years. And we need, we need direction, okay? And I think this is the comprehensive way to get that done.
All right, and I'm going to comment one more on your, on your bleach program. Mike, if you don't mind, you can, you can fill in the blanks on the, on the, on the meat of this. But we voted to, to stop that. Cheryl, when Cheryl and I first got on with council two years ago, we voted to not do it because it was, it was a want, not a need. It's just an upgrade. It is, it, it does nothing to improve. We still, we use chlorine right now. We just use a different kind. That, that's all that is. That's, that's.
And it still makes, it still meets.
We are 100% compliant with all things. And Mike, maybe you can help me with the bleach program, how that all works.
Yeah, it's, it's for safety. It's converting from liquid gas, or from, I'm sorry, from gas, chlorine, to liquid bleach. So it is, it's been on our long list for several years. It just keeps coming off the capital side with everything else that needs to be done.
That's right.
I'm pretty sure Chris was correct or wrong. I think we are throwing it in on the well to have to redo all the work in well two. I think we're putting it in over there.
Yeah, so we, so we aren't going to start on, on one part.
Well, yeah, since we're already doing major work over there, we'll get a better price on it, being that the warranty contractor on site.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you for that clarification. Any others?
One other comment.
Okay.
Because this was brought up to us that, and I'm quoting, we need a city secretary. We need a HR manager. We need a finance tech. We need an economic developer, unquote. So on my mind, I know, I'm thinking 350,000, and it's not a whole lot of money, but it's enough to pay some people, you know, that we want to get on staff. And one of the big issues we're having is the tight budget. We just got through borrowing $3.5 million to do our infrastructure. And I don't want to see us get in a position where we have to raise sales tax next year. I, I just, right now, right now, I'm not, I'm not trying to say any bad eggs. I just don't see where, that we're in a financial position to spend this kind of money on this kind of project.
We haven't budgeted for this year, that portion that we were going to spend. We have it in our budget.
It's already in the budget.
So it's not like we haven't defined it.
I know. I saw the line, Adam. The budget actually states 150 grand. They were all talking about 120 grand to start with. That's another thing about the process. They hit us low in the beginning, then the next thing I know, it's 250,000. Then the next thing I know, it's 100,000 for software. That's, we're going to invest in software, folks.
So the original project is 150,000. And at any point, once we get through the original, we can choose not to go further. That was the steps that we went over in the workshop, the one, the two, the three, right? We, at that time in the workshop, we said, hey, throw us the whole thing. And if we decide we don't want to go forward after the first year, whatever we come up with, we can back out.
That's right.
We can a la carte it. We'll take these services or these services.
Exactly. That was the flexibility.
I know it's in there, but it's easier said than done. And, you know, when you've got somebody that's got 100, $350,000 coming to their pocketbook, they're not going to be wanting to just drop the ball on it without a little hustle. I mean, to me, that's what the builders do. They, they tell us one thing, they promise us to do all of this, then when economic concerns hit them, they want to change a venue. They want us to do variances. Well, this, we're asking this company to do the same thing. And we're getting it from the builders. It comes to us.
There's going to be so much involvement with everybody. And I think we'll have a finger on the pulse of how money's being distributed and making sure that they're earning their dollar. We do need an ROI on this. And, and there's going to be a lot of input.
Yep.
So I, I don't think that this is just a tunnel vision, and there's only going to be one set of eyes. I think that there's going to be a lot of set of eyes and a lot of communication about it.
Okay.
And based on all the cities that KKC has done this for, remember, we were given that, that workshop, all of those cities, we had time to go look at it and see. And I believe they've done, I think it was like 32 cities.
They did Vegas, they did Washington DC.
Yeah, yeah.
We are not, we are not, we don't want to, we're not there paycheck, okay? Just so you know.
Yeah, but everybody.
We're the small fries on that.
And everybody should really appreciate Stan's opinion.
Oh, that's.
I agree, but I just want you to add your fact story. Because what you're telling these people, a lot of it was wrong.
Oh.
Yes, because I, I just told you, most of it was wrong.
Yeah, so let me, let me.
The signage is not wrong, because we have to have the signage. You just, you see that they've done that.
Well, maybe I don't know the history of everything. That's why I depend on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because.
But Stan, remember this too. Along with this is a steering committee. And we've been talking about and moving the direction of what we call trilateral planning. We were too isolated, separate, the left-hand, right-hand thing was going on, okay? A steering committee consolidates developers, engineers, possibly a lawyer, I don't remember who was on the list, but it's good community input, okay? So we're getting community buy-in as we go forward. And we don't go forward any, and, and this, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, they fully knew that it is, as Sarah said, an a la carte type of thing if we choose not to go forward. So, so let me ask this question. Is, is anyone on council, that specific amount is actually 345, 351? If, would we feel better?
It's spread over three phases.
But that's spread over.
It's two phases, three phases.
Three phases. And we don't even have to go to the third phase.
It averages $15,000 a month roughly, just a little shot of that.
So do we want to modify that or just stick with the three-year commitment?
It's spread over three phases. The first year, the first phase is 100 and some thousand, right? Then the second phase is supposed to take another six to eight months into the second year, right? Then the third phase is where all the long term was if we wanted to get the other things done.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. If we're comfortable with that, then the motion needs to be that exact amount. If someone wants to make a motion otherwise, then I.
This just does not exceed. So we know we have this much that we can use, but if we only spend 200,000 of this, and we only spend 200,000, this doesn't mean, okay, this is a land grab, and everybody, go get what you want, and let's make sure we hit that 345, 351.
We're not committed to that.
I don't know how you determine the stopping point. That's beyond my comprehension.
Well, the council will do that.
Yeah, so first, first, remember, we're looking at recodifications and ordinances, and getting our arms wrapped around that, and get on that page. And then the second, what we want the city to look like.
And that is it. Getting to that ordinance is very important.
It's huge.
But I still appreciate.
The whole point of the last workshop was to set the deliverables for each phase. That's where the stopping points were. Your first phase costs so much with these deliverables. If you want to walk away, you walk away.
If you go by the minutes, I know they, they put that in there. I understand they put that clause in there to give us an escape, but the gist of the meeting was, when we make this commitment, we need to go full steam ahead, and we need to make it for the full term. Because if you stop at any one point, then how do you determine what value you got for the money? the money you spent for six months or the first eight months of the project?
That was the deliverable of each phase, Stan. That's what deliverables are. That's what your value is. You've got these certain things that you paid for for that phase. Do you want to move forward? Yep, we moved to phase two. Now the next set of deliverables are due, just like any project.
Space management ordinances, my God, we know we need those. So that's, that's in eight months. So if that's all we get, that's at least a great foundation.
Right.
And we're light years from where we are today.
Yeah. All right.
But I appreciate the fact that you have the question.
A good devil, devil's advocate.
Yeah, he is.
Trying to kill it. All right.
What was, what was the amount again?
345,000, 351.
Yeah.
Not to exceed. Read exactly like it is if you're going to make a motion.
I was trying to find it on my, the recommendation.
On page 194. I would like to make a motion to approve the professional services agreement between the City of Montgomery and Kendig Keast Collaborative, KKC, in an amount not to exceed 345,351.
Motion by Sarah, do I have a second? Second is by Cheryl. The motion is debatable, amendable, requires a majority vote and further discussion. All in favor of approving the motion as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone oppose, say no.
No.
And we will approve item 10 as stated. I see that our guest is here, so we will backtrack to item 9, discussion and possible action to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 audit presented by Bell Harris Paycheck. I guess it's a paycheck. Anyway, that name right there, L L L P. Go ahead.
Good evening, and I'm already here with Bell Harris Paycheck, and I'm here to present your annual financial report. I'd first like to start off and say a big thank you to Mary Ann. We've worked with her at her previous place that she was at. And so we've had some experience with her, but she did a great job providing us the information that we needed to pull all the audit together. It went very smoothly this year, so a great job on that part. So I will jump into it. I'm going to go over about the three most important pages, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. If you'll flip with me to page number one. This is going to be our opinion page. It is a page that we consider the most important out of the audit. You receive an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that you can receive that there are no material in these statements and all disclosures are to be made with generally accepted accounting principles. So great job on that. Now if you will flip with me to page 24 and 25. We'll look at those general fund revenues. Total revenues for the year in the general fund, 5,964,729. Total expenditures, 4,950,648. You gave you a positive change. We have a couple of transfers in and out, but a net change in your fund balances of 1,013,115, leaving you an ending fund balance of 3,18,269. So great job on that positive fund balance increase. One of the things that we look at is that fund balance and we compare it back to expenditures. What we would consider a minimum amount that you would hold in that fund balance would be about 25% of your expenditures. So you're sitting at about 61% on those, that fund balance to expenditures. So you've got a nice healthy fund balance going there. So just wanted to point that part out, but that's looking good. And if you will flip over to me with me to page 55, we'll look at your, your budget to your actual numbers. And what we're going to focus in on is that total expenditure line item. If you go all the way to the right-hand side, you'll see that the variance is a positive That means that you came in under budget by 84,000. So overall, you came in under budget. If you'll notice, there are two items that are starred up there that those amounts were not budgeted. That had to do with our, the GASB implementation that we did and we've had to record our principal interest for your leases. So that part, although it was budgeted up in the line item for the, for your, like where you're paying for a copier lease, we had to move that down to the different line items, so that budget is, is missing from there. So that's the reason that we're starting. But again, looking at that bottom line, you still came in under budget for the year.
So that 84,171 is part of that number on page 24 of the 1,1408-1?
No, this is, this has to do with the amount that on the expenditure part, if you're looking at what the actual expenditure is, and you're going to compare it back to what the budgeted experience, the expenditures were, then you came in under budget by that 84,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Now those are about the three most important pages, but I'll be, I can answer any questions that you might have.
I think coming under budget with everything being priced outside is a pretty, pretty healthy thing.
Is it normal to take this, this amount of months to complete an audit? I mean, I'm just asking because it seems like last year it didn't take this long to get the audit in-house. You know, we're already happy here under our new budget.
I think we're pretty close to when we came through.
Early spring. Yeah, early spring.
That's fine.
And then, you know, I know we were both, you know, Mary Ann was working with us and trying to get the books ready for us, so next year we'll even run even smoother.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
So just a comment to city staff and Mary Ann. I mean, we're on the budget, not because we did anything, right? Y'all did that, so good job. Very good job. And having Mary Ann add it to the staff has done wonders for us to get our books turned around. We really have confidence in where we sit, so that's, that does a lot. But city staff is too, they're the ones that are to blame for us being under budget.
That's great.
But I have to say, when we did a request for some information, when we had it probably about four or five minutes, it was accurate.
Very good.
She did a great job providing us with the information. And we asked her a lot of stuff.
Any other questions? Not entertaining motion.
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 audit.
That motion by Casey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stan. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 9 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone oppose, say no. We'll approve item 9 as stated. Thank you.
I mean, no doubt, I'm an eighth minute, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going now to item 11, consideration possible action on variance request for minimum lot width and minimum lot area submitted by Taylor Morrison of Texas Incorporated.
Mayor, council, you may recall workshop on this proposal opened on February the 12th, and it is the former Summer Wind Project, one of these former Landstar Lockways. Consistent with what the developer's intention was at the workshop, they have applied for two variance requests relating to lot width and lot area. They're asking, pardon me, they're asking for 55-foot wide lots instead of the city's minimum 75-foot, and they're asking for a lot area down to as low as 6,000 square feet with some of the lots being in excess of our minimum, which is 9,000, but some of the lots are going to be, and many of the lots are going to be in the 6,000 square foot range. It is worth noting that they are not asking for a side yard variance, except that they intend to have 10-foot side yards on both sides up to 55-foot wide lots. Not asking for a variance on lot depth either, which is 120 feet, which is the city's minimum standard. With that, I will turn it over to the development team. He's here, you may recall him from the meeting as far as their engineer. If you have any specific questions, one last note, this is the planning and zoning commission met, and also no objections. We recommend approval of the variances of your staff representatives as well.
Seems to be everything that was asked for and talked about in the workshop. Okay, any questions? All right, that's why we workshop, folks. Entertaining motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept number 11 as presented.
Motion by Sarah, I heard Stan first. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires a majority vote. All in favor of approving item 11 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone oppose, say no. And we will approve item 11 as stated. Item 12, consideration possible action on assigned variance request for the Montgomery Bend Development Entry Sign.
Again, Mayor, Council, this sign variance request is for the faulty development out along 1097. In short, I've got a whole bunch of sections of the code here, but in short, what the city sign ordinance compites is a monument sign similar to what you see in woodlands or having commercial areas along Highway 105. So what they are proposing is something that we've seen more of recently, certainly I've seen it in every, look around, new neighborhoods typically will have some kind of architectural element to their sign. A planner might call it a placemaking thing or, you know, just, you know, a sense of a rivalry. So in looking at this, city staff cannot approve, and also the way that our ordinance is driven is that anything that's connected to the sign counts for that sign area. So our sign ordinance suggested we complicate anything like this, and staff can only review it against what we've got adopted. So we are not able to approve it with staff. Staff doesn't offer any objections. It looks like it's well put together. It looks, you know, consistent. That's really, you know, we happy to answer any questions you have and ultimately the decisions to allow it counts as.
Did, you said it's went through planning and zoning?
The sign ordinance, that's not required. They're more from a, from a land use standpoint, that's, they've got the architectural.
For sides and stuff like that, right?
But the, the terms you really designated to the, the architecture or aesthetics outside of the historic.
Are we requiring landscaping underneath the sign?
In terms of to kind of screen that, that body, you sure can.
Okay.
When everything, you have a store to the pizza shack.
Yeah, or even Hauser, like he did a great job with that, that's real pretty. I know that that's not on the agenda, but I was just asking if you knew.
Well, I guess if we wanted that, we would have to amend it, amend it. But I mean amend the.
Yeah, we can add it.
Yeah.
On one of the pages of the plan says notes, number one, refer to landscape drawings for location. The primary column, maybe it's showing landscaping.
On this page, there are landscape plans in there, but if you want to say that we don't find this subject to some evergreen shrubs underneath that big void, that could be something that you could add that wouldn't really affect what they're required to do in the landscape plan, it's still going to be the ordinance over there in the landscape limits, but.
What's behind the sign? Because it's a big sign.
Right now, we, if you see, I'm looking on page 249, which is kind of the first, you know, kind of blown up plan of that section there, you see that in the back of that is kind of a corner, one of the lots, this is all reserved.
Oh, it's on the reserve.
On that curve, yeah. So it's unlocked.
Right on the curve.
Right? It's got its own lock.
Yes, so this is out of, this site is out of the roadway, it's out of the easements, and it's all within the building, you know, instead of that.
Just faulty is correct, or they're having to take it back and you know how the signs are on.
Oh, they do, okay.
I'd like to keep that streamlined, it looks really good.
Yeah.
I think it looks nice.
Well.
It's rather large. 30 foot by 8 foot, that's, that's a big sign.
I want to make sure you don't pass it.
Yeah, that's for sure.
All right, we have a motion.
What are we struggling with?
He's just wanting to get.
Well, I can't visualize this. I'm going to vote and let him do it. It's nice.
Looks good to me.
Yeah.
Well, I have to make a motion on item number 12 to accept the item as presented and look forward to the landscaping, or do we need to make the amendment or just assume that it's already going to happen? Because of what you said, Chris? Do I need to put it in the motion?
It doesn't have to clarify it, so it's, it's set up here. It just seems confirmed that this is.
Except item number 12 as presented and looking forward to, or making amendment to the landscaping design that's going to be included.
It was evergreen, you know, something that you felt filled up that void.
Yeah.
I second that somewhat, whatever we do.
So Cheryl seconds what Sarah and Dave said. So we have a motion and a second. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires a majority vote. All in favor of approving item 12 with the verbiage as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone oppose, say no, and we will approve item 12. Item 13, public hearing for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to be heard on a proposed amendment to chapter 78 subdivisions of the city code of ordinances to define and regulate besting rights of property owners and regulate stalled development projects within the city. And so.
Do we need to set the date for that?
Well, we're just holding the hearing, right?
We had to set a date for a public hearing.
We're holding it now, right? Okay, so it is 6:47, 6:47, and we're holding the hearing at this time. Is there anyone here to speak regarding item 13?
Okay, so just to clarify, so everybody knows what item 13 is actually talking about. It goes into what we were discussing earlier with the KKC, the ordinances that we want to redo.
Yes.
Do you have any questions about that project? Now's the time. Go for it, Stan.
I think I thought this before because I couldn't, I couldn't realize the two years and the five years is if it's for individual project or, I can't distinguish between the individual two years and the five years for a total project because what my thoughts were related to me more precise is like on Redbird. Redbird is going in with four, five, six home builders, okay? They're going to buy lots. So, so five of the home builders, they, they fulfill their contract and build their houses and their lots. The sixth guy goes under and we've got lots vacant with no builder. Where do the two and the five years apply and to whom? The developer or to that builder? That's, that was kind of where I was going with that question, but you know.
So, so once those lots are planted, sold to builders, at that point, the development is there. What this one is going to address is if the developer for Redbird Meadows came in, he got some variances, but the project died for two and a half years, and he comes back and says, oh, I'm, you know, now ready to go again. He's got to go through the same process. He can't say, well, I got approved a couple of years ago with these variances, but now tweak this project to be something different than what you, you know, learned about a couple of years ago. So this is really more the developer's show, not a psych.
Okay, well, that, so that's two years though, right?
Does not expire no less than two years from application. An entire project to expire no less than five. An entire project to expire no less than five years from application.
It gives them the time range of two to five years.
So they can get their act together or abandon the project.
Okay, what if somebody in individual lots building their own home? How long do they?
Same thing, either the developer.
Five years, yeah.
Okay.
Let's go for it.
It's what we needed. Any others? Okay, it is 6:50. And on to item 14, consideration and possible action on a proposed amendment to Chapter 78 subdivisions, Article 2, administration to add Section 78-29 vested rights to the City Code of Ordinances.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to Chapter 78 subdivisions as proposed.
Motion by Sarah, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Casey, motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 14 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item 14 as stated. Item 15, consideration possible action on granting the city administrator Gary Palmer to authorize the, to, the authorization to renew the city's interlocal agreement for the provision of fleet maintenance services by the city of Conroe. Don Moss?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, excuse me, Neil with his father. The MOU has just, for us, have more options with people maintenance, and it's also compared with local vendors that we currently use and try to get the best price.
Simple enough.
So how long have y'all had the contract with Conroe since 2013?
We have renewed it probably since 2019, I believe.
2019.
I think we've used Conroe since 2019.
So who do y'all use currently?
We use AutoTrust stoves, modeling, crystal rotors. There's enough innovation off of free torque, and so we're constantly shopping for the best rates, you know, who's, who's charging what per, per hour, and that's where we're finding major costs, because it's ranging anywhere between 120 to 160 an hour.
Shut down.
It's very costly, so we're just trying to be good stewards of the funds that we're alive, and to make that last.
I know that some of the patrol cars have been taken to Tom Ball, that's, is that not?
Tom Ball was for the vehicle maintenance with the electric systems for the lights.
Okay. So that was also another independent, basically?
Yes.
Okay, so.
You're confident in these rates?
Yes, yes, and we're still in shop, you know, even if whatever we get from them, we're still in shop for a better price.
Okay, so this doesn't lock us in and lock us down, we can still go.
We can still be free.
Okay, okay, all right.
Both of us will use it the same way as we have also, is it, for us, it's a backup. Conroe does great work, but it's like drive to Conroe, you'll get an oil change, and it may be a couple hour wait, you know, we do it here in town, but it's a great backup plan that we're not, we're not, if we never use it, it doesn't hurt us or them, but it's a great plan to have in place. Also with heavy equipment, if you with a piece of equipment, that is an option that we can take you to.
That's what I was going to ask you, some of the heavy duty equipment, because Conroe does have a full department for that sort of thing.
We have driven backup to Conroe, because it's cheaper to drive it there than it is to look and pay them to come and get it.
That's what that traffic jam was about.
So you don't have to use it, you, you're, that's at your discretion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we like to use our best too. We're very able to come south and build these cars and all those for maintenance as well.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
Make a motion to approve granting the city minister, Mr. Gary Palmer, the authorization to renew the city's interlocal agreement for the provision of fleet maintenance and services by the city of Conroe.
Motion by Casey, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Stan, the motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 15 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item 15. Thank you. Item 16, presentation of the police department's 2023 racial profiling report.
So the stats we know every year, they're provided, they're done through the state of Chico, all the information is accessible to any citizen, and you have the reports,
Make a motion to approve the presentation of the police department's 2023 racial profiling report.
Motion by Stan, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Casey, the motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 16 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item 16 as stated. Item 17, annual review of contracts with Cody's Lawn Service LLC for grounds maintenance and right away mowing and lift station we control regarding the service cost and level of service.
Evening, Mayor and Council, I have the easiest one of the night from it. No changes are being made, but it does require the council, the local council, once a year for approval, so that's what we're asking.
I have a question.
Sure.
Award yearly renewable and both contracts with no changes in services, what about money? Any change there?
None.
Because how much do we pay them yearly? Do you know? I mean, I, I see the breakdown of the expenses and charges, which is good, which is good, we need to know kind of where the money's going, but for me, I just want to know, are we costing more or less, and how much are we paying?
We approved that last year, right?
It's always the same. He's not asking for a fuel increase or inflation increase, or he hasn't asked for a fuel increase in the past. He's not asking.
He did last year, if I remember right.
And this job was bid out to the best, to the highest bidder, like you request, right?
Yes.
I took five, five, there was a few.
There was, yeah, there was three or more.
And he, he won the bid.
Yeah.
It's a two-year contract.
Three.
Three years.
Or a year or two, but next year we'll go out and bid.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And he does a great job.
Yes, he does. Little to no complaints in that area.
We would keep him.
Okay, we have a motion.
I make a motion to award the yearly renewal of both contracts with no changes in services.
Motion by Casey, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Stan, motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 17 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item 17. Item 18, consideration possible action regarding amending Chapter 90, Section 90-71 of the Code of Ordinances to increase the fee charged for grease trap inspections.
All right, this was pretty simple too. With the new contract with Hayes, the monthly fee for grease trap inspections has gone up, so I want to pass that law, and I'll take the loss on our end. We are recommending five hours over cost, just like we were before, because there is some administrative work that has to be done monthly. And we also put in the verbiage to cover grease inspections, because that wasn't pretty special. Just plug that up a little bit.
Curious, how much is it for an inspection, the part like the regular inspection?
65, please.
Sixty.
Sixty, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept number 18 as presented.
Motion by Sarah, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Casey, the motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 18 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item 18. Item 19, consideration and approval of a resolution of the city of Montgomery adopting the 2024 Montgomery County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mayor and Council, we have the performance of Gary and Montgomery, I got pretty much about this other than this doesn't lock us in doing anything, and Gary just wants these are aspirational goals, which to some degree require them, so we do participate in this.
Right.
This helps with the getting the grants and.
Being part of HGC.
Money and things like that, doesn't it?
Right.
Yeah, we've done it forever.
So this is the five-year update.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution as proposed.
Motion by Casey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah, the motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item 19 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item 19 as stated. Executive session adjourned into closed executive session is authorized with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Chapter 551 of the government code of the state of Texas, 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, 213 Prairie Street, it is 7:01. deliberation regarding real property, 213 Prairie Street, it is 701. It is 721, and we are back from executive session. Do we have any council inquiry?
Yes. Kelvin Arnsworth, who was a pillar in this community, owned Joe Mama's Barbecue, has passed away. Last week, we go as the funeral, and I don't know if council would be interested in like proclamation or some kind of acknowledgement for him.
That's his name?
Kelvin Arnsworth.
Arnsworth.
Joe's Mama's Barbecue.
Oh, Mama's Barbecue.
He's been fighting cancer for the last four years.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know that.
He thought he had outrun it, and he got it.
Very nice.
Have you ever seen him without a smile on his face?
No, he always had a smile.
Very nice.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's because the owner was sick long.
Yeah. So anyway, just asking about that, or I don't know. Do y'all want to do something?
Stan has a comment.
I'm already in deep water, I might as well get a little deeper. So Montgomery Chamber merged, and I don't think building bigger is better. I think we lost our identity. Our name is not in the Congress's name. It's associated with another city, and, you know, I know it's okay for the members, you know, and it's going to create more of a network for them, but, you know, I don't think... You know, they could have come to us and asked us, they wanted a travel advisory center, and we could have tried to work something out instead of trying to get bigger and then say, oh, I've always wanted this travel advisory thing, and, you know, but, you know, it is what it is. I'm not mad about it, you know, but I just think, you know, when our name is gone, we've got no identity.
I think the name's going to still be in it, though. It's still going to be in it. Let's go back and forth.
Well, the whole group is merging.
Here's the thing, there's a lot of background and information stuff, relationships and burn bridges and all of that, and that's why this chamber hasn't worked or whatever, getting help out. And Shannon's done a good job of growing this chamber, but this chamber's on life support. So it's great to be able to have somebody that came in that can elevate us. And I think the visitor's center, our downtown businesses have been asking for that. And by the way, now the businesses are part of the chamber and get that exposure because of burn bridges in the background. So I think that this is good that they're going to come back and invest in town. How the visitor's center here, and hopefully that, and I have already heard from several businesses who said that they will be joining it. So I think it's good.
I mean, I think it's good.
There's some background about that, too. We used to have a chamber here before, back in the nineties, Carol. And we merged with Conroe.
That too.
Yep, so this is the second trip around, the second trip around. They turned out to be the first time, but that's okay. It's better for the businesses in the chamber than it will trickle down to the city, but I don't think we have much say in it. I don't think we have any say.
It's like a business, it's a fine decision.
I do agree with Stan, I'm not a fan of build better either, or build better, whatever it is. Because it certainly ain't better.
Bigger's not necessarily better.
That's a nation thing, not a city thing. Anything else? All right, need a motion to close.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, hang on. Sarah, there's that.
There's a fence that went up on Jacob's property, what is that about?
I would prefer to hear and talk on that. I know they were in conversations, I don't know anything about it.
I didn't see anything, any permits come through us or planning on zoning, and I don't think anybody here knew anything about it.
But we don't see permits at the Capitol.
No, but it's on
It's on city property.
It's on city property.
It's on city property.
And it's not, the fence across the street is a rock fence, it's not a static like it's
When I park, now I can walk through there.
Where's the fence at, Carol? Where's the fence at? It's great to be able to
Well, you're Jacob's
Kilroy Dance is. Now you have to go down to the street and go By those rose bushes.
Talking all over the landscaping all the time, that's why
But it cactus.
And
You mean cactus?
Jacob's property.
If I can add, so the city did build it.
Yeah.
The city built it, just in case I didn't make that one clear. But again, I asked Gary and Mark, I know that they would have to talk about it.
Love to know the idea behind that and the reason.
Yeah, was there a complaint, was there
It's the landscape, I'm telling you.
What?
I'm not sure, but I should find out.
Yeah, because now people are going to be climbing the fence, and
Not many.
For the downtown street dance and all that, it was nice and open. Oh, I understand.
Festivals and things like that.
Because they're all over the, our business, and they have those things.
Actually, it wasn't at the dance, it was before, somebody fell. Crossing through the bushes.
Through the bushes, exactly.
Don't know why you do that.
Anyways, I make another motion to adjourn.
Motion and second, all in favor, say yes. And it is 727, we are adjourned.